I would like to bring this meeting to order. So first of all, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I would like an approval of the agenda.
Still moved.
Adrian, do I have a second?
Second.
Matt?
Yep.
Okay. Before, I have a couple announcements before we go into a public thing. I remind everyone to please not use the chat on the Google Meet unless you're just having audio problems and trying to solve those. We cannot have conversations going on in chat. Same with texting during the meeting. If you can try and avoid texting or passing notes at the best. I understand that if there are family obligations, as my wife does, I recall trying to do things, but please try and avoid that one. And I'm just gonna call who is in the room right now. So I am here in person, beyond embarrassment. Chair, hello?
Oh, Adrian Raymond.
Doug Earl.
Matt Gouchberg.
Bruce Morton.
Josh Squire.
Brian Hill.
Why aren't we looking up through the cameras over there?
And Paul joined us online.
Yep. Oh, cool. Paul. Hey, Paul.
Did he leave this out here?
I don't know.
Thought you would say this out.
Yeah, one other thing I would like to just kind of say is a congratulations to our new superintendent, Brian Hill. I'm really looking forward to that. I also want to thank the process of getting Brian on there, Jackie Wilson, our V S B A consultant, who really helped us through this process, made the process... I couldn't... I'm very impressed with that one. I would want to thank the search committee, who did interviews and vetted people. I want to thank the community, who joined us in various stages of that. And I would really like to thank my fellow board members, too, because there was a lot of conversations and things that went on there. So, thank you. Thank you, Brian. Looking forward to working with you in the long term.
Thank you.
And I will, there will be a little announcement going out through Front Report Forum on the emails. So, Ann, I'll send that to you to send out to all the staff, kind of like a little announcement. That said, public input and announcements. Ken, are you on?
I am, B J. Can you hear me okay?
I can.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Some citizens in Wallingford are concerned that Bruce Morton is still serving on the Mill River Board as a representative of our town when he is no longer residing here and has not been for about six months. A group of us approached the Wallingford Board of Civil Authority to request that his name be removed from the checklist, and following that, he would be obligated to step down from the Mill River Board. The B C A agreed to issue a challenge letter, which Bruce responded to promptly, saying he had to move out of his place in Wallingford in October, but intends to make improvements to a structure at his boys camp off Wallingford Pond Grove in the near future and establish that as his primary residence. And he remains listed as an active voter in Wallingford. Some Vermont statutes, as far as voting in a town, are concerned, are subject to interpretation. However, serving as an elected official, an elected representative of a town, is another matter on much different standard to be held to than the right to cast a ballot one, two, or maybe three times a year. It's all well and good that Bruce intends to make improvements to a building in a remote location in Wallingford to make it convertible year-round. But when winter comes around again, it might be that didn't work out. Meanwhile, he will have been taking actions and casting votes on behalf of people he was no longer neighbors with, perhaps for as long as a year. We will not be able to go back and undo his actions and votes if that turns out to be the case. The right thing for Bruce to do is to step away from the board immediately and let the remaining board members appoint a citizen who resides in Wallingford to fill that vacancy until the next election. In this case, the August primaries. If at that point in time Bruce has successfully established a residence in town, in the town of Wallingford, he will be able to run for the seat again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. I did not have any other people sign up for comment. Is, but I'm, we only had one, so I'm gonna open it up. Is there anybody else that would like to make a quick comment that's in the public? Okay. I don't see any hands being raised or anything, so, thank you. Board discussion on public comments. Anybody like to say anything? Bruce, would you like to respond?
I'm a resident of Wallingford, according to the Secretary of State.
Okay. Moving on then. So I have an approval of minutes. So, for, do I have a motion to approve the minutes for 3:23, 22?
Make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Here, one, two. Okay, we have unanimous. We only have two people on.
There's three now. There's Sam, Liz, and Paul.
Yeah.
Sam.
Liz and Paul.
And Paul.
Oh, Paul has his, does Paul have his?
Paul's got the cameras open.
It's right here.
Okay, I gotta change my layout, so I can see everybody. There you go. Now I can see more people. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from 3:12, 22?
Liz, raise your hand.
Thank you. Thank you, Liz and Sam. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Good. One, two, three. Unanimous. And do I have a motion for approving the minutes for 3:16, 22? Liz, Sam, awesome. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. Okay, Bruce, you've not raised your hand. And you'd like to abstain. Is there anybody else that wanted to abstain? Okay. So Bruce abstains from 3:16. Student representative updates.
I think I saw student reps on.
Where are they? There they are.
Turn their camera on.
Not much to really report on, but spring sports are doing good. Unified basketball team has, the unified basketball also has started. They won their first game yesterday, and it's got a lot of support throughout the school. I know people who have attended the games, and I attended the first one. It's gonna make us do it because of baseball. This week, we are doing a spirit week, and Friday, we are also having a pep rally. And we are also having a dance Friday night as well. Yeah, I think that's about it. There was a junior college fair today. Juniors who signed up, went to Castleton to speak with representatives of other colleges to plan their future and see what they did.
That's all.
Okay. It's all good information. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Principal updates. Who wants to go first? Maggie, are you raising your hand? Go for it. Then we'll get Fred, then Tyler.
At Shrewsbury, our third through sixth graders have just finished their E L A aspects last week and had the opportunity to kind of celebrate that on the Fridays, doing pajama day and a crazy hair day, which is kind of fun to just let loose for a day after some pretty intense testing stuff. They'll do their math aspects after April break, so it's a little bit spread out for them. Our pre-K and second grade classes visited a local sugar house, and that was nice to get them out of the building, and it was within walking distance, so they got to kind of trek through the woods to go to that. We've also been doing some fun multi-age collaboration in the school where our fifth grade math class, Mrs. Clancy's math class, made a computer game to help our second graders practice some math facts. And they went in and helped their second graders navigate that game. And then we've also been doing book buddies, where our older students go down to pre-K and read books with our younger students. And I think the biggest challenge we have right now is Shrewsbury's been pretty healthy for the past two years, and right now, we've had all kinds of illness, not just COVID-related stuff. But fortunately, we're seeing kids who have, you know, mild, regular kid illness, and they're back in school in a few days. So that's been interesting. I don't know if anyone has any questions.
Awesome. I think I'll let Fred go next. I know he's itching for this.
Thank you. Appreciate that, B J. Well, first and foremost, we're very excited to introduce our new principal when she is officially hired. So we're waiting on that until the news comes through. We're excited about that. We, too, have had some celebrations because of our testing and our P B I S work that the kids have been doing. So we had a big movie for grades K through six, popcorn, all in the gym. It was a lot of fun. Under continuous improvement, we've decided where the teachers will go for next year, unless our new principal changes that. The classroom teachers have agreed to their moves for next year. We're gonna continue to loop like we have in the past for as many classes as we can. All the educators agree that that's the best for our learners. It also helps with the relationships, you know, that take sometimes a few weeks to develop in the beginning of the year. We just finished another round of STAR testing, too, to go along with our S back. And that helps us to group our kids into small group instructions. We use F and P down in the primary groups. They pretty much test just about every six weeks or so, so that they can regroup that. Under our S E L, our challenge is, the staff is brainstorming what next year will look like with the shift of paraprofessional and what it will look like day-to-day. But the general education paras have accepted replacements, and many of them will be working with us next year. So we're excited about that. You are invited, lastly, to a math and science museum that we scheduled for a board night, in case you wanted to go, on May 18th. We'll all sit at our school, of course, but from 5:00 to 7:00, the community is invited to come and see all of our displays and listen to the kids answer whatever questions are posed to them. Thank you for that. Appreciate the time.
Nice. Thank you. Any questions for Fred? And I see Jane up in the top corner, so you'll be introduced very soon. Tyler, I want to throw you in the middle of the mix this.
That's really rare. Usually, you know, we have to do all elementary, then I get to go. So, but always following Fred. So I'll take that. It's okay. It's all good. I follow Fred. It's all good. So, you know, like everyone else, we have a lot going on. You know, the building's really buzzing right now. S back testing is underway. Our E L A is pretty much done, moving into math, like Maggie said, after spring break. Scheduling for next year is also really one of my foremost duties right now. Really deep in building a master schedule, and then start scheduling the kids here really soon. Another huge thing, which is really awesome and weird, I think this is my first time in my entire tenure at Mill River, spring sports has started with no snow in the fields. Now, I know I just completely jinxed that, and we're gonna get, you know, probably measurable snow over April break, which we usually always do, but right now, our fields are clear and they're looking good. So that's a huge plus. We were gonna have Bistro, our great musical event, on April 1st. However, due to, you know, some illnesses in our staff and our students, we decided to push that back. So Bistro has been rescheduled to June 11th, which, believe it or not, when we started looking at weekends to do Bistro between April 1st and June 11th, June 11th was the first open weekend we had where there wasn't some kind of testing going on during the week, or a sporting event, or another music event, or S A Ts, or whatever. It was just crazy. We're graduation. So June 11th will be our Bistro event, and our seniors are gonna, three seniors participate graciously coming back after graduation to do that event. So they're, they took the news well. I was really kind of scared and a little apprehensive about giving kids that news, but I made sure to let them know it's rescheduled, definitely not a cancellation, just to postpone it. So we will definitely push off or get off Bistro this year, because it's a great event. See what else is going on. Like our student reps, Sydney and Chris mentioned today, that we are in the middle of Spirit Week. We're gonna have a coming activity, a pep rally on Friday during our H block at the end of the day. And then also that night, we're gonna have a spring fling dance. So that's also a thing to look forward to. Along with dances, we have prom. Prom's coming back as well, and it's natural form. That's gonna be May 21st. We're gonna be at the South Side Steakhouse. And that event is, the theme for that night is starting night. So also, graduation, we, I made a call, because I had enough students coming to me saying, you know, we need to nail down our graduation date. And our official graduation date is June 8th. However, if we're doing it outside, it could be any day that week on the best weather. What we decided to do, I talked with Gary, and we decided to rent two stages, one for indoors and one for outdoors. So we're going all-in for June 8th, rain or shine. So if it's nice, we're gonna be outside. If it's not, we're gonna be inside. And one set of chairs, a little bit of, you know, people power to move those chairs, but we'll be okay. I think that really does help the community knowing we have a solid event date and time for graduation. Then also, another thing that's really kind of fun is Project Rab. Project Graduation's gonna come back that night as well. We're gonna take our seniors to the fun spot over in Queensberry. I've gone every year. I've been a part of Mill River, and it's always fun to get out there and race the kids on go-karts. That's probably the best part of the evening. So it's a really good time. The kids have a great time with it, and it's a great way for them to end their, you know, their high school career. Couple other things going on here. So we also have our senior awards coming up on June 7th. And then also, something I want to talk about that I think was a huge success that just happened this past Monday, our early release day, we did a spring carnival. So we had our vision team, the Mill River Vision Team has been working on this for quite some time, and it basically, we looked at doing classes, non-curricular classes, but still classes and activities that kids are learning on, and then also for social, emotional learning, community building. It kind of looks a little bit like Rutland High's Yes Plan, if you're familiar with that year-end studies plan. So we did some different classes on Monday morning, and we had kids engaged in all different kinds of classes and going out. And I have to say, it was awesome. It was phenomenal. There was, you know, the kids were all engaged. I mean, we had kids making pizzas. We had kids baking different things. We had kids hiking out in the community, out to White Rocks or Creek Road. We had kids playing golf. We had kids in the gym in different sports. You know, Zen Tangles. I'm still not quite sure what a Zen tangle is, but they were doing it in the library with Karen McCullough. So we had a lot of great activities, and we're gonna do it again on the May release day, and hopefully we can get more kids outside, because the weather's gonna be better and different activities. It's a great way to build community, and I gotta say, I went to every classroom where the kids were participating these activities, and they were all engaged. They were all loving it, and they're having a great time. Our teachers were engaged. So it was a great activity, and we're gonna build upon it for May. So, a really, really good time.
Awesome.
I know I threw a lot at you there. Any, any questions?
That's the first principal update for some of you guys.
Been a little while.
Yeah.
This is one, yeah.
Yeah. It feels good to actually hear again.
Even though I followed Fred, I think I topped Fred that time.
You get one, Tyler.
Maureen, how you doing?
How's it going, B J? So, it has been a while, so this is going all the way back to the beginning of March. We ended our winter sports program on March 11th. We had a couple of cancellations that we had to make up. And it was by far the best winter sports program I've seen. This is the first time we've actually gone all six weeks. And we went to Pico this year, and the instructors were fabulous, and the kids, you could see the growth. Our third and fourth graders just completed their scat and track, scat and track program that they do with the Vermont Fish and Wildlife. They got to use the snowshoes for the first time that we received due to a grant from Vermont Principal Association, and they were tracking out in the backwoods behind the school. Four wins is starting up again this month. The 10 community volunteers, they took a short break during the Omicron surge, and this program, we're really glad it's back and running, because it's one of the kids' favorites. They look forward to it. Last week, no, the, our attendance has improved drastically, and just in the last few weeks. In spite of the previous concerns over the high absentee rate, our mid-year math and literacy assessments showed solid growth. So we're getting back on track. We're currently gearing up for state assessments. We completed E L A. Math S back begins the week after spring break, and we know that it impacted learning. The COVID impacted learning over the past two years, but the teachers are optimistic and the kids are engaged. It's starting to feel a lot more normal. I just have to finish by adding that on March 31st, K6 attended the, attended a hip lit performance at Castleton University, and the program included a little bit of hip hop and a little bit of ballet. And it was, it was, there was a real positive response, and it was a very inclusive program. And the kids actually got off the bus dancing as they came into the school. So I would say it was a huge success. So that's about it for Timmets. Do you have any questions? No?
And, am I missing Dan?
Yeah, Dan, Dan couldn't make it tonight. He had a previous engagement. So he has notes that he's gotten to me and I can share. Dan was with us three weeks ago at our last meeting when we bumped them. So I'm sad that he couldn't give it himself, but I totally understand. And he put some good time in last time. I'll hit the highlights here. He, Dan, you'll hear some very similar things across all of our schools. Winter sports was very successful at Wallingford, too. They had to do a slightly different program because COVID and everything going on, and partnering with Okemo wasn't necessarily workable. But they found some local options, ice skating, snow shoeing at White Rocks, sledding in the nearby community. And the kids had a blast, and parent volunteers were incredibly useful in making the program successful. Great positive feedback, and special thanks to Mr. K, the P E teacher, Aaron Klochheim out there, and to Jessica Morgan for coordinating and pulling that off and making everything go smoothly. They've also been rolling through their STAR assessments, and they're seeing overall growth in all grade levels on STAR assessments, when you compare the fall scores to the winter scores. So similar to what Maureen was saying, we're starting to see getting back on track. They've also completed their E L A S back, and they're gonna be doing their math S back on that same timeline. They've been doing some work with some of our district folks and some of our interventionists to help interpret those test scores, so that they can even, even make what they're doing in the classroom more impactful, so that we can see more improvement and growth there. And lastly, Dan would like to share that they spent a lot of time last year working on a positive behavior intervention program. So how to make very clear and explicit expectations to students, and to make that school-wide. They did a lot of work on that previously, and they are seeing something that I think a lot of schools are seeing. Coming out of COVID, students are needing a little extra time to transition back to the classroom, and they're not quite picking up where they left off as far as social, emotional, and social skills go. They are seeing an uptick in behaviors, and they're, they're working with their staff to figure out how best to reinforce those clear, common expectations with their students. They were doing a faculty meeting at the release day on Monday, actually, that we joined the tail end of, where they were wrapping up some of that work. So Dan is trying to work collaboratively with his staff there to try and address that social, emotional need coming out of COVID. And that's Dan's report. If you have questions, I can absolutely pass those on and get those answered for you.
I actually, I know fifth grade's going to Starbase. Is that happening at the other elementary schools, too?
I think Wallingford's the only school that goes to Starbase. I can chime in if I'm wrong, anybody.
Shrewsbury's got Starbase.
We start next year on that Timmets.
They don't do it every year.
Yeah.
Yeah. My daughter was so excited, because her rocket had like a B and went up 100 feet, but the teachers had the C, and that went over the building, so I heard all about that.
Shooting rockets is the best part.
Oh, yeah. I have a superintendent's search update, which I kind of, I guess, jumped the gun on that one. Brian, is there anything you would like to say?
I'll just again say thank you, and I will do everything I can to do right by the district.
Okay. Moving on. COVID update.
Yep, and that, I'm hoping, will be really short. It was not too incredibly long ago that we shifted to mask optional. And I've been checking with principals occasionally. I have not heard any issues. I know we were concerned about folks making the choice to mask and folks making the choice not to mask, and whether there was gonna be any, any tension there, any consequences, you know, if students were gonna not necessarily be nice to each other. And I haven't heard any reports of that. All I've heard is that folks have been incredibly respectful, and they've, they've honored the choice, which I think is great. In the high school, and in the elementary schools, too, actually, the last time I was down at Wallingford, there were students wearing masks still, which was this week. Last time I was at Clarendon, you know, I don't recall if I saw students wearing masks, but in the high school, every day, you see students still wearing masks. You see some staff wearing masks and some not. So we've definitely, I think, navigated that well. There has not been a COVID update since then, because the Agency of Education has released that to the Department of Health. So schools are in the same scenario as everybody else is. We are following Department of Health recommendations and guidelines. So likely, we will not have any large COVID updates in the foreseeable future. Now, there is this new variant that is, I guess, the B2A, that is very similar, very similar to Omicron, and we've seen numbers flatline in the state. I think we've experienced that in our schools, too. We haven't seen cases disappear. We still have cases, but they're not, there's no uptick. And we probably expect to see cases as the year rolls on into summer. But as Maureen was saying, attendance at Timmets is, is in much better shape. There, you know, I, put it this way, at some point, we're gonna run out of folks who can get it. And I think in Vermont, we have kind of gotten to the point where a lot of folks have gotten it, and there just aren't too many people left, if that makes sense. Questions?
Okay. Okay. Board goals adoption. So the school board got together, and I was opening this the other day. I was planning on opening this, but I didn't do it. Can I back up? Can I get it? So, just kind of a quick little update. So I guess, right after, yeah, I wasn't even cherry yet.
No, we didn't, we?
No, it was really early on. We've decided to take a Saturday and meet together and go through our board goals. And I think we're very proud of what we came up with. I will say that I'm looking forward to probably revisiting these probably revisiting these earlier than later, uh, now that we have a new superintendent to just make sure that, um, the vision is the same. But while that's going on, I'm, I think we did, we got it done.
We did it with all the new members.
Yeah. And everybody here got to do it. So
We went over them again.
Yeah.
Remember, we had another, yeah. You were the chair.
I wasn't chair yet. I was vice chair still. I had
Oh, it was that one weekend. It doesn't matter. Either way.
I do want to say, I want to give the headings. Um, like we had a goal for student opportunities. We have a goal for student growth or goals. Um, we have goals for equity. And I want to read through all of it. Uh, we have a goal for community. Goal for human resources. Then we have finance and facilities. I think that is the different various headings. Are those made public?
They are posted on the district website. So, and I will, as soon as the board approves those tonight, I will post the updated version.
Okay. So those will be up on the website. That said, uh, can I have a motion to approve the board goals?
So moved.
And do I have a second? Yes, Liz, seconds. Okay. All in favor, please, please raise your hand. Looks unanimous. We have goals.
BJ, can you send me the most updated version you have, just so I make sure I have the right one?
Share.
Thank you.
Brian. Send. Okay, done. Teacher appreciation project. Liz, I think you were the one kind of leading that. I have an idea for that. I don't know if you want to, oh, speak to it yet, or if you want to discuss it quickly.
Yeah. Um, so good evening, everybody. What basically, uh, so teacher appreciation is May 2nd through May 6th. And my feeling is it's important that we appreciate our faculty and staff. I'm going to love, we're all teachers, right? It's not, I don't want to just celebrate our classroom teachers. I want to celebrate our paras. I want to celebrate anybody who works in our district with our children. Because we're all teaching them things, right? So, um, my feeling is a little appreciation goes a really long way. I think it's a, an exciting opportunity for us to work whatever makes sense. We can work at the building level with our PTOs. We can work, you know, maybe at Mill River with the Booster Club, uh, or class leadership. Um, you know, it can be parents, it can be board members, it can be student leaders, it can be anyone in the community who wants to help out. But I thought it would be nice if, you know, our, our faculty and staff had, had a little token of appreciation. Again, whatever makes sense. So I had in mind just a little handwritten note to get started. And then beyond that, you know, whatever we have the capacity to do and whatever makes sense. But we have a lot of creativity in this community and I don't know. I mean, the sky is really the limit. So however folks can envision doing this, however it makes sense to do this, it's important to me that we lift up and show appreciation for everyone who, all of our school employees who are working with our children every day. So that's, that's it. That's the idea. And I would love help from everybody, um, to make this happen.
Well, one idea that I was having, you want to say?
Oh, I was just going to say, Liz, have you talked to, to the different schools? Cause I know in the elementary schools, the PTO, PTAs, whatever you want to call it, usually take the lead on that kind of thing. I don't know if anything happens, because there's not really a PTO from at Mill River. So I'm not sure if maybe we should focus there.
Right. So I haven't spoken to anyone and I do, from, from where I sit and stand and all of that, my little porthole into all of the things. I think it makes sense to work with our PTO at each of the elementary schools and at the high school to huddle up with Booster Club and our class leadership. To do, again, whatever. I, it's important to me to write a handwritten thank you, um, to everybody. So, I mean, obviously not me and all of our staff and employees, but I, I'm, I'm, um, I was raised that you write thank yous for everything. So, um, I still do that in my life. I do make my own child do that. I make my stepchildren do that. So I would like to see us do that because a handwritten note goes a really long way. And yes, I haven't talked to anyone. So if building principals want to help, you know, at the building level, you know, working with our PTOs. And if we can at the high school, uh, work with whomever it makes sense to work with. Um, I just, it's something I want to ensure happens is, is all.
Would it make sense for something like a board member for each school and, and you coordinate with the principal and figure out maybe what is going on with PTO? Or maybe what isn't going on with PTO and then sort of work from there? I'm just thinking about how to coordinate that.
Well, we can. I'm okay with giving up some of my own time and just doing something directly from the board. Like if it's just a handwritten note, I mean, I know PTOs would do stuff or the schools would do stuff too, but you know, um, I was thinking, I know we're, our next thing on the agenda is retreat scheduling. If we can get that scheduled in there, if we can take, you know, a half an hour. And if someone can help organize just us signing or what to write.
What, what if I talk to principals and I figure out, you know, if I could get lists of names from each building or things like that?
I think a list of names would be helpful, you know, some information.
I'll, I'll do some of that on our end so that I can get you something if you do want to build it into the retreat.
Thank you, Brian.
Yep.
I, I do feel like so, for example, having, having a student at Mill River, um, I know Matt has kids at Mill River. I know Andrea has kids at Mill River. Yeah, I know you have kids at Mill River. I hope I'm not leaving anyone out, but I, I do feel like we can do a grassroots effort to like pull together, families and parents and, and students and, and at least do a board something.
Okay. Okay. So yes, we'll, uh, so what do you, what is the next steps moving forward with this one? I mean, like I said, I think getting some names, getting definitely a list of names and things, uh, is important. I think we can definitely take some time in our retreat and hopefully get some handwritten stuff out.
I think if you just schedule some retreat time, I'll figure out.
So
I'll look into like, thank you cards.
Okay, that's awesome.
Much like Liz, I also have a, a lot of thank you cards in my upbringing and life. So I have, um, quite a, quite a collection that I would love to at least start that going with. Cause I, uh, I have a problem with buying them. I got a lot of them. So I'll bring what I have and I know we'll need more.
Okay. So we'll get the names from Brian. We'll get some thank you cards going and then we'll try and schedule some time at a minimum during our retreat. And if that doesn't work before May 2nd.
You can write a lot of cards in half an hour.
I think we can, or while we're talking. I mean, it's something we can easily sign. Okay. Uh, that brings us to the next one, retreat scheduling. This specific retreat, we really need to hash out and complete the bylaws. So it's going to be bylaws and I guess hopefully we can get it before May 2nd. So we can do some of the, uh, teacher appreciation stuff. I cannot do this weekend, but after this weekend, 16th, 23rd, 30th are all date, are all Saturdays I can do.
I cannot do the 30th. I have a work board meeting in person that weekend.
I'm pretty booked in April. I got Saturday matches all for the rest of the month and I'm finished.
Well, here, do you want me to do this? Um, why don't I, myself or Ann send out an Exo Window poll? And what I'm going to ask is if I can get a day where there is, I don't, do you want to go a quorum? Do you want to go?
Three quarters.
Three quarters. So if there's at least, if there's at least nine people that can go on a day, would everybody agree to that?
The rest of us can be caught up if we can't be there.
Okay. I just wanted, I just want to know how many people I need to say, okay, I can get eight people there. We're going to have it. Or I can get nine people. What's, what people are thinking on that one?
I think eight's sufficient.
Eight? Okay. So that's how I will handle that one. So if I can get eight people there and I'll send out one of the Exo Window calendar things and it'll be the 16th, 23rd or 30th. And we'll pick a date that way. Okay. And I will. Cool. That actually makes that process quicker, I think. Technology purchases. Brian?
Yep. Uh, this is something that around this time last year, I brought almost the exact same information to you. And the reason I brought it to you, even though it's under our policy E1 limits, where if we're making a purchase of $15,000 or more, we bring it to the board for approval. Even though it is under that limit, uh, it's the same vendor. So I want to be totally clear. If anybody ever saw, oh, we're paying this vendor a certain amount, how come this didn't come to the board? I figure, why not just bring it to you? Uh, so that's why I'm bringing this to you today. These two products are products we've used for several years now. One we've used for, gosh, probably now about six years almost, I think, maybe seven.
Star 360?
Yeah, the Star 360. And you actually heard a lot of your principals talking about the Star 360, the math and the reading. We are required to have a local assessment in addition to the state S-Back assessments. So we do this S-Back assessment once a year. Well, that's great. And that's for state and federal accountability. But we're required to have something locally that we can use so that we are showing that we are tracking progress and we're working to improve student outcomes before we get to that once a year test. Because once a year doesn't give you too much to go on. So Star 360 is what we use for that. The great thing about Star 362 is that drives intervention because we can use that for what we call progress monitoring. So if a student is struggling and we can schedule them in for intervention, we're going to be checking every couple of weeks or so to see if they're making progress. That we know, that way we know if what we're doing is working or not. Uh, and that really helps our intervention program run, uh, and function and make sure that they're making the right decisions and how to, how to best support students. The Schoolzilla data warehouse, that one's a little less. Trying to think of the right way to put it. Um, it's a little more abstract. That's something where all of our test scores go. So all of our STAR scores that we're talking about end up in this warehouse. Our S-Back scores end up in that warehouse. The VT science, uh, information ends up in that warehouse. Attendance information goes in there. Uh, grading information from our student information system goes there. So this is the place where all of our information goes and lives. And the great thing about that is we can start sorting data and we can say, I want to see third grade, third graders across the district that have poor attendance, what do their test scores look like? And you can do that in three minutes where if you wanted to do that manually, that would take you three days. And BJ, BJ can tell you is three days accurate or is that?
Brian, I, my job at my current district is to try and, we're starting to set up an alternative. We don't use STAR 360, so we don't have access to Schoolzilla. So we're, I'm setting up another one. But I remember talking, like, there was one time that we made a decision and it was a database decision. And I pointed out, we're making it off of one data point. What Schoolzilla will add is the ability to make decisions off of multiple data points.
Cause if all the, if all the students with poor test scores have poor attendance, is it a program problem or is it an attendance problem? And we've got to be able to make those decisions or else we're always throwing the baby out with the bathwater, so to speak. We go, well, this program doesn't work. Let's try another. And then people never get invested in a program because we never spend enough time to actually, you know, so we're just going through these cycles of, you know, let's try something new again. And there's nothing new. You know, we're all, we're just doing the same thing that's always been done. So it helps us make those decisions better and not just keep trying new things and nothing ever works. It helps us really narrow down on what's effective, what's not effective.
Is this our second year with Schoolzilla?
This is our third year, actually.
Our third year. Okay.
So we've been using it for a while. And when it comes to reporting to the state for, uh, you know, this, this is not a lot of money. When we get $300,000 of title funding and we have to create data reports to access that title funding. So we'd either be paying somebody to spend three days at a shot to try and do this work. Cause we have to do this work to access some of those grant funds. So I think it, it does, it does pay off in the end. It's, it's helping us access those funds which run our intervention program. But we have to show to the state, believe it or not, we have to show the state that our intervention program actually makes progress. We submit that information every year when we do our grant to ask for more intervention funding. So I think it, it gets us more than it costs, if that makes sense. Any questions on, on those or the purchase or the reason I'm bringing it? No? Okay. So I would just ask a motion to approve the purchase of these products for the upcoming fiscal year.
So moved.
Second.
Cool. Any discussion?
Sounds like a great investment.
Okay. All in favor, raise your hand. Do, one, two.
BJ, this is Liz. I'm in favor.
Okay. Trying, thanks Liz.
And I wonder.
She had to call back in.
Is, is it a reasonable place to tell principals that they can enjoy the rest of their evenings?
Yeah.
I think it is very reasonable. Although poor Jane's sitting, still sitting there smiling. We're here next. We're doing some updates and then you're in that middle of that updates. Okay. And so negotiations.
We are still making progress. With nothing completely to report, although I'm hoping that within maybe the next meeting, we can bring at least some numbers of what we've done to the budget.
Okay. Personnel. Len's not here, so Matt's going to take care of it.
Len's not here, so I am representing the personnel committee. I do have four positions to approve for hire. I will do the first three of them as one lump and then the fourth one separately.
Sounds good.
The first three would be a position for varsity football assistant. Coach Adam Di Bartolo. The second would be, um, varsity softball, Nicole Rauw Midigai. Hopefully I did, hopefully I said that right.
I think he'd still do better than I did when I
The last one is field track coach, Trish Rafter. Can I get a motion to approve these for hire? And Liz, is that a second? Okay.
Sure, sure.
Discussion?
Any, any discussion? All in favor? It looks unanimous.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome. The last, um, position that I'd like to approve for hire tonight is for the new Clarendon Elementary School principal. The finalist was Jane Richards, who I believe is actually on this call.
Yeah, look at that smile.
Hi Jane.
Practicing her patience as a, uh, waiting for the board.
Second row down, third over, next to Fred.
Waving.
Can I get somebody to approve the motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll do second. Anybody do second.
Any discussion? All in favor? And it is unanimous.
Yay.
Welcome aboard Jane.
Jane, would you like to say anything? Jane, would you like to say anything?
No, I'm just, I'm really excited for the upcoming full year and I'm excited to be working with everybody at Clarendon. It's honestly been such a crazy fun ride to get to this point and I'm just excited to get started.
Thank you, Jane.
Oh, do we need, how many years of contract? Does that think that may need to be part of the?
Part of the motion? Two-year. Yep.
Okay, it was for a two-year, do we need to redo the motion then, to include the years?
Uh, it wouldn't hurt.
Okay, it's two-year.
Two-year contract.
So, uh, I'd like to make a motion to offer Jane Richards, Clarendon Elementary School principal, a two-year contract.
So moved.
Uh, second?
Second.
All in favor? It looks unanimous again.
Okay.
Welcome aboard again.
Thank you.
And Jane, you're more than, more than welcome to, to go on with the rest of your evening. Thank you for being here tonight.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Okay, that leaves policy. And I know Andrea was fighting, was not comfortable and didn't want, wasn't gonna join today.
Yep.
I don't believe, Brian, I don't believe they've had a meeting since our last one.
I think you're right, I don't think there has been one.
There are some specific policies that have come up that we're gonna be discussing.
There are two policies. One is a bonus policy that would outline that any time a bonus is paid to a class of employee, that it, it goes to the board so that we keep that transparent. And then the other policy would be a special ed, uh, the special ed... Oh, gosh, Coral, jump in and remind me what that's called.
I get it, yeah, it's the adoption of the newly published special education regulations, which we just need to sort of formally adopt as, as the policy that we will follow, you know, moving forward, so that's, that's what we need on that one.
Thank you, Coral.
You bet.
And I'm almost positive that will, that will, that meeting will occur next Tuesday at, I don't know what time.
Stay tuned.
It's the earlier one.
Time to be announced.
I think it's 5:30?
I think it's 5:30. Okay. 5:30.
Yeah, I see 5:30 on the calendar.
Okay, buildings and grounds.
Well, that was fun, we had one today and, believe it or not, we stayed a little hour. And, uh, I'm probably gonna change my, my thought was process was to have it just before the board meeting, but that puts us here from, oh, we were here from five o'clock until about what time it is now. So it's in a row. We did talk about, um, nothing major is going on during this week's vacation coming up here in a couple of weeks. Uh, we went also through some things. They've started a lot of work on the fields. I think Brian was saying, thank God we have, was it you with the?
Tyler, Tyler was.
Tyler with the snow, I'm sorry, Tyler. That, with the snow, and since that's gone, they can get faster work for the, uh, for the, uh, the fields and stuff that are out there. I think, stop me if I'm wrong, guys that were there was, did he say something about a, um, scoring ba, a scoring pad up?
Softball, scorer.
There's a, a scoreboard going up for, um, softball in the, out in the other area, that's going up soon. Other than that, it was kind of quiet. It, uh, we did have some issues coming up with the soon-to-be building that's in Clarendon. It was a corporate building or whatever for us and then we, we've gone to putting Coral out there. And we're hoping to get that pushed around, so we've got that in operation this coming fall. It'll be great, uh, great for the kids to have there. We're doing some repairs for some of the, uh, some of the, um, the slides and things at the fair, at the playgrounds that there have been both Clarendon and in Wallingford, I believe. So some of that's gonna be coming up. Other than that, we're in pretty good shape. The next meeting will be, it's tentative right now for the second Wednesday in, uh, in June. Uh, I may move it around a little bit, but at least by June. I want to get something so we find out what's going on during the course of the summer, where things are gonna be built or repaired, whatever it may be. We, by the way, if anybody wants a job as a bus driver, come right in. We'll give you the best job that you'll ever have. Hopefully.
I'm actually gonna back up that bus driver thing because that is actually at mission critical. And it's a call out to the community. If you want to keep busing going in our school system, we're gonna definitely need some bus drivers to drive. And there's a national shortage, so.
Can I share something, BJ? I, I have been talking with Gary a little bit about this because we have had some challenges the last several weeks. Uh, we've had some bus drivers who have had to take some time. And when we do that, we end up running a combined route. Uh, but then we, we ended up in a scenario where we had a combined route for a couple, for about maybe two weeks or so because we had somebody who had to be out that long. We're not getting any more bus drivers. And it's gonna be a struggle to do what we do. And there's gonna have to come a time, I think, when we come up with a plan that's consistent and it's not always combining routes. I, I don't love that we have to send a message home midday and say, hey, folks, this is happening this afternoon. You know, even letting folks know, hey, this is gonna change for two weeks and it's, you know, a week out from that change. I, I, I know that, that caregivers and families need some consistency in their schedules. I think that's important. So we may have to think at some point about how do we shift our model and what does that look like? If we can't get drivers, I think that starts to look like a model more like public transportation. So a model where we would have set routes and we would have set stops. And then folks could access those stops, but it would be far fewer stops than we have now. So that we could, we could cut the rides down. Because if we're stopping, you know, every couple of miles we stop, that adds up and that makes for a long bus ride. But if we had a pickup, like, let's say, a pickup at Tinmouth and anybody within a certain range, if they could get their, their child to Tinmouth, they could access the bus and pick up there. Uh, that's the model that Gary's kicking around in his head right now. So if we were to do something that was a consistent model and it used the drivers we have available, you know, say we're down two drivers, that's where we'd be going. Absolutely willing to have conversations if folks have other ideas of what that could look like. But right now, that's, that's the thought. Why are we talking about this now? Because we don't want this to be something that we hit October and, and we have to shift to something like this and it's the first anybody's ever heard of it or thought about it. So we, we just want to get that word out sooner rather than later. I'm gonna try and work with Gary to send a note out to folks about that, just so folks have a heads up as we're thinking about that, if that makes sense. Questions on that?
No.
It's not where we want to go, but it might be where we have to go. And if there are any other thoughts on how we could do that, absolutely. We want that feedback.
Any community members that want a part-time job? We'll do anything we can to get the bus drivers. Okay. Community engagement, Sam?
Uh, so we haven't met since last time, so the biggest thing to report is that our meeting is on. I wrote, sorry, I have so many dates in front of me because I was really excited during all the report outs of all the events that are coming up. So look for that because we are excited about those. But our meeting is April 12th at 6:30 hybrid.
Okay. Finance.
Good evening, everyone. We have the following payroll and pay orders for approval. For payroll, I have regular payroll dated March 16th in the amount of $6,167.39. We have regular payroll dated March 25th in the amount of $586,237.7. And we have regular payroll dated April 1st in the amount of $6,099.69 for a grand total of $598,504.15. For pay orders, we have from the general fund, a pay order in the amount of $436,936.95. From the general fund, we have a pay order in the amount of $10,324.75. From our after-school program, we have a pay order in the amount of $4,872.38. And from our lunch program, we have a pay order in the amount of $90,028.44 for a grand total of $542,162.52. And lastly, from student activity accounts from Mill River, we have a pay order in the amount of $7,000, I'm sorry, excuse me, And from Clarendon Elementary, we have a pay order in the amount of $38.84. The grand total from our student activity account of $2,752.57. And I move that we accept and approve payroll and these pay orders as presented. So would someone second that motion, please?
Sam's seconded.
Jane's up there?
Okay.
Any discussion?
No.
The non, all those in favor, and BJ, if you would do the tally, I would appreciate that. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Two, three. Anonymous in this room, one, two. It looks like we got everybody.
All right, thank you so much. And the next meeting of the finance committee is Monday, May 23rd at five o'clock. And as far as I know, that will be hybrid. Thank you very much.
Okay.
And, and I think actually Stan maybe had one other thing that he brought to the finance committee that was worth bringing to the board. Stan, are you there? It was the, the work on the foundations building.
Yeah, Brian, uh, we decided the table is, it's a day, get on the agenda.
Okay.
We're gonna put it at the next board meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, Brian.
Absolutely. Ad hoc committees.
So Len and I had decided that we were gonna hold off until after the superintendent search was done because we've had so many meetings. So it will be scheduled, I'll be sending an email out. I've just gotta talk to Len, so.
Okay. And Len, yeah, Len was the other one, so. Okay, we're at transact, any other legal business?
Oh, I wanted to, um, put my name into, to join the policy or the, was it the person, no, sorry. I'm on policy.
Okay.
I just wanted to point out it doesn't change the quorum numbers. Just adds another person to make the quorum.
Do we have a process? Because I think we don't have to vote on that when we do it during reorg.
No, we don't have to.
So just, I guess by consensus, that seems like a pretty good, okay thing. It doesn't change the quorum numbers. It will change the number of members from six to seven. Right now, we still need a quorum of four. So whether you have six members or whether you have seven members, you still have the quorum of four. Because it's, oh, we're half. Okay.
Okay, I guess I am on, thank you.
Congratulations, welcome.
Yeah. Brian, can you make a note to update the website for, with that information?
Done.
And, and the spreadsheet?
I just did it, so you're good.
Awesome. Uh, any other business? Cool. Uh, agenda building, we have the thing that Stan mentioned?
Yes. And then I, I wonder, Liz had asked for a couple of meetings ago, a data presentation. I think by the 20th, we can have something, if that's something folks still want.
Yeah, I was gonna ask that again anyways, so.
I wonder if folks want a little bit of Act 173. Coral had shared some the other evening, but I wonder if we have gone to some of the schools and given a presentation at the schools too. And I wonder if you want to see some of what we've been sharing with staff?
I do.
We could do that. We could do that briefly enough. I think that that plus data, we could probably pull off in maybe 40 minutes, maybe about 20 minutes each. If you want to do those the same meeting, if you want to split them up, I'm, I'm, I'll do whatever you'd like.
Would it be better to have a 6 o'clock PD meeting on them?
Oh, yeah, you know, that's a reasonable.
We used to do that.
Yeah, yeah. If you want to, we can do that.
I'm fine. Yeah. I think we're gonna need to bring back that 6 o'clock.
Board education meetings.
Well, it's almost nicer to meet at the beginning and have that time before it gets late.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Seem to be getting a.
Do that. Bruce, then Matt, and then I have something.
I think we need to go back. Back in December when COVID was rampant, we went virtual. I think we need to talk about virtual versus live at some point, as well as talking about meeting at other schools.
I like that. And actually, Brian, I'm gonna add on that one.
Yep.
Do you think you could put together a proposal, like you can, you and I can work on it?
Yep.
To actually have, to lead that conversation, it's like, here's an idea. Would that sound like a good thing? Yeah, because I really want to get into these.
Yep, to get to other schools. We, we can talk about it.
So we'll, I think if we have something in hand to say, hey, here's an idea, is it scheduled for the rest of the year? That would be really helpful. Matt?
I know I brought up a little while back about getting an athletic update.
Kim is all set for the 20th.
Perfect, just wanted to make sure it didn't, you know, fall through, so.
Totally.
Thank you.
And I have one other one. Board training has been brought up. Jackie Wilson, our consultant, recommended something. There's been some stuff out on the VSPA. We're a new board. There's a lot of new members and a lot of old members like myself who definitely could use a refresher or an actual, I don't think I have attended a workshop, which is not good. So, and I've kind of asked, she's not here, but Andrea, if she can kind of lead what our options are for that. So I would like to put that on the agenda as to what options we have and.
And I think we can get some materials to folks in advance so you, you can read over it and have a sense of what's being offered. Then you can have the conversation about who wants to participate, I think.
The things that were offered recently in the VSPA, I did not look, but did anybody look to see what timing of that is? Like, do we need to act quicker? Or do, can we decide at our next meeting?
There, there's stuff at the, that's scheduled from the VSPA and then the VSPA also offers, in fact, they have a new employee who's specifically, you know, there to do like board trainings.
Yeah.
With, you know, just come down and actually lead a training with a board rather than the stuff that they had sent out for at that, in that last email. There was a lot of training for individuals, but not as a board together. And I don't know what you were talking about. I mean, there's new board member training and that, the VSPA organizes.
Okay, well.
There's board chair training, but then they also have, they also have the capability of coming in and doing board workshops.
Okay, so maybe we'll talk.
Which are pretty reasonable.
So, nope, the VSB did send out a thing about different trainings, an email. If you're not on that list, we gotta figure out how.
Everybody should be on the list because we send new board member names to the VSPA and Carrie puts them all in her big spreadsheet.
So take a look at that and then the next meeting, we'll talk about more like the full board trainings. So we'll add that as an agenda item. Anything else? Okay, um, is my understanding, we do need an executive session? So.
Just, on the 29th, the VSPA sent their weekly update and legislative blog. They send it out weekly, so there'll be another one coming up Friday. But that's where they had all of the possibilities for board trainings. Just saying.
Okay. Awesome. So executive session, everybody who's remote should have a link. So, executive session, everybody who's remote should have a link for that. And are you on the one that is now?
I'm on this one.
If you want to, if you want to just keep it open, I don't know, unless the public, yeah, and then we'll go from there. I do believe we'll, we might have a vote, or we might not.
I think we will have a vote.
There's a likelihood of a vote after the, coming out of executive session. Oh, we need to do all that, the hoopla stuff.
That stuff.
Yeah. Brian, do you have the wording that I can say, "so moved"?
We need a finding that premature public knowledge dealing with labor relations agreements would place the board at a substantial disadvantage.
"So moved"? Does Sam second? All in favor, raise your hand. One, two, looks unanimous. Okay, and then, do I have a motion to move into executive session? Sam, Adrian, discussion, all in favor? Okay, and we're going to go move into executive session at 8:11. I'm going to...
It's cool.
Let's see Paul.
Okay, we can wait for Paul.
He may not make it.
They have a quorum, so.
We could, this is pretty minor. We could just send him an email.
Yeah. Okay, well, we have the quorum, hopefully he can jump back on, if not, I'm sure he'll appreciate just... Okay, I guess, am I making the motion? I guess I can make the motion. I'm going to make a motion to allow Brian Hill to set the end date for school.
A second's in.
We have a second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand. Looks unanimous. Can you mark Paul as, I'm going to say abstaining, because he was here and just wasn't able to come on? And I want to honor that. I don't know if I think that's reasonable.
Thank you, everybody.
And then I say we adjourn at 8:25. Thank you, everybody.